Hey Posh, I'm just giving people some time to hop on in here. So if you guys are jumping in, you're welcome to let me know by giving me a little wave or I get to see when people are watching. So I'm in the call from the gym as you guys can see. To be honest, this is my first ever um Facebook Live because I actually like seeing people while I talk to them, not just talking to myself. But I know you guys are there on the other screen somewhere, so helpful. Posh, I'm excited. Uh I don't think you got our email today, but I will send it to you. Um so we're looking at June 1st. That's what we're going to talk about today. Um I'm just gonna go ahead. I think people are gonna be popping in. I'm gonna give it like one more minute here just so I can get more people joining live if they're going to. That way if people have immediate questions. Posh is like, what? Uh if people have immediate questions, we'll get to those after I go through my long spiel. Uh I shouldn't say long. It's a long list, but it's pretty quick spiel. Um so we'll get after that in just one minute here. People are obviously welcome to watch this later, so I'm going to save it. Um but if you're curious as to what's going on, we're gonna get after it here. So obviously you guys know who I am. I don't know that I ever need to tell you guys that I'm the owner of Rooted Wellness CrossFit Conex, but I would start with that. Um so sure day owner here. Um I'm in the physical location. It still exists. It has not burned down or disappeared. It does have some construction going on, which I'll talk about in a minute, but you can see behind me. The uh death trench is, shouldn't call it that. Um it looks like a death trench now. It's got a big hole in the ground. Um but it's gonna get poured in, so good news there. I'm just gonna start with some of those current things happening, just in case you haven't been getting the email or you're like, I don't know, there's way too much. Let's get it in one spot. So currently what we have going on, um we're doing those daily classes. You're getting an email every day with the workout and a YouTube video link. And then we have classes at 5:00 AM, noon, 5:00 PM, and then Saturdays we have Team WAD. Um we're doing a challenge right now to get us through this month. And we have those coffee with coaches going on. Additionally, we have Tuesdays and Thursdays kids classes happening at 10:00 AM. We have Thursday Mobility with Matt at 4:00 PM and we have Sunday Yogas happening with Beth um at 7:00 PM. So those are gonna continue on through this month. You also have a link to give me your shirt size. Um all members that were around in the month of May are getting a shirt as a May appreciation. So thank you for staying around. If you were here this month, you'll get that shirt. Going into some gym updates, um we ordered a floor scrubber today, probably not as exciting to the members as it is to us as staff. But we got one of those like push floor scrubbers. I got the scrubby today. The big like push thing will come later this week. Um and then like I just showed, we are pouring cement to fill in that little crevice that sometimes causes issues. Hoping to add a little bit more usability to the space with that. So those are some things that are going on currently. And then we have to talk about that upcoming or what are we looking at in the future? So upcoming Murph, we have Memorial Day coming up. We're not gonna be doing Murph. We are going to do a different workout for Memorial Day. We will be pushing Murph to Labor Day. Potentially it will happen on 4th of July, but I'm thinking that Labor Day is gonna be a much more clear um path of like what does life look like at that point? So probably gonna do Murph on that day and instead Memorial Day will be hitting a hero workout Laredo. So Memorial Day is on the 25th. I'll have more information coming on what Memorial Day looks for like for all of us. Um something to keep us together a little bit on that day. There was a level one that we were hosting at the end of May. That is going to be moved to August 15th and 16th. Again, that's on the CrossFit website. So if anyone's interested in getting their level one, they can check that out on their own. It's a thousand dollars. That's not affiliated with us at all. We're just hosting the space. So you can check out um the level one on crossfit.com and that's August 15th and 16th. Um the date of our competition, we're gonna push that into September. Um I'll figure out if you guys want your shirts beforehand or after that. Um they are like three quarter lengths. So realistically, they'll be perfect for September for the fall. Um but if you want it in the summer, I'm more than willing to give you guys those competition shirts early. The big thing that everyone's here hoping to hear about and learn a little bit more on is that email that I sent out today with the hope of opening June 1st. Um I've been following along with Tony Evers and what's going on in the state of Wisconsin. And at this point, it sounds very likely that the current Safe At Home extension will fall off and will return to some sort of normalcy. In the Badger Plan, gyms are in that first phase of reopening, so we're looking at being allowed to open after May 26th um with some restrictions. So we're not gonna rush into the doors like May 27th, which is a random Wednesday and like make it a sudden change. We're gonna give you guys the month of May to get ready and then opening June 1st. There's a potential it will get pushed from us. Um I'm not in control of that unfortunately. But if everything is cleared, we will be opening in some capacity um physically here starting June 1st. So what I mean by in some capacity, things are gonna look a little different, but that's okay. We're completely ready. You guys shifted right into online life super fast. And we're hoping that you'll ease back in um and watch us phase into what the future looks like. So one month at a time, definitely. We're just gonna talk about the month of June right now and what we're hoping things will look like. Again, I'm following very closely with the governor and what the government's putting out on um restrictions or recommendations even. Um we're looking at those recommendations and taking them pretty seriously since we do want what's best for everyone in this space. Um so one month at a time, we'll look at things. What I wanna give you guys some information on right now is just that I know that a lot of questions are coming up. Uh like what's it gonna look like? You know, we don't just like a little piece of the puzzle. We wanna like have a bigger picture here, so I just wanna give you guys a little clearer picture. Um it will come out in a guided physical form little bit later when I have more time to dig into all of the information and really put it in a way that's digestible for you guys. Um but I think talking to you guys is the easiest way to get that information out. So key things, we will have limited class sizes. There's no question on that. Um we know that space wise, it's still gonna be important that we're using social distancing the best we can while in a physical location together. So we will have clearly marked spots on the ground for you guys. We'll have a set number of people that are allowed in a class. That's gonna be dependent one on if we're told the number. You know, if you guys saw they opened retail stores today and they told them like five to 10 people could be there. Um I think that they're gonna base it for gyms on the size and how many spaces you can have that are still socially distancing. Um so we'll have that better picture after the floors relayed and I get everything marked out. We have the limit of um cardio equipment as one of the other things we wanna consider, but we're looking around probably nine to 12 people per class. Um with that, we will require a reservation before class, 48 hours prior you can reserve. So as much as we know our schedule usually, um I can't let people book out their entire week. We'll have to do 48 hours at a time um with a four hour cancellation policy and then a one hour prior to option to sign up so that the coach can get the class ready um if there's somebody else popping in last minute. With that, we'll have wait lists and all those fun things and I'll give all the details on how you use Zen Planner to do this. But your first step is you can download Zen Planner if you don't use it yet on your phone or don't sign up for classes. You need Zen Planner for this. Um we need people or making reservations for their classes. So first thing there. Additionally, we will not be able to have common space or like communal space. Um so after class, you guys are welcome to go hang out in the parking lot at a social distance and have a conversation. Um but we won't be able to use like the locker room or chilling on the couch or anything like that. Um and not really in front of the whiteboard and um hoarding in spaces. So um not great, but that's what we have for the month of June. You can go outside. It'll be nice enough. You can, you know, socially distance, have a conversation in the parking lot, get caught up with everyone. Class times, we'll get on that um as best we can. We're gonna have some key class times. 5:00 AM is not a question. That's usually one of our biggest. Noon is not a question. It's one of our biggest. And then the 4:30 class time will be somewhere around that time. Um and we might shift the next class a little bit in the evening. Potentially another morning class or evening class depending on what you guys let me know you want. I'll get to that in a minute. Um so again, not the communal space, some reserved uh or some limitation on the number of people in classes. Required reservation for classes and then key class times um which we'll be working on. We will be wearing masks as coaches. We aren't gonna be required to wear those masks when we're in one spot giving um suggestions if we're like standing at a distance from everyone and it's easier, you know, like we're demoing something. It's gonna be hard to hear us. It's already hard when returned from you. We can take our mask off at that time, but if we're walking around, you'll notice we're wearing our masks. Um for yourself, please do get a mask um or make a mask. We're not gonna require that you wear it while you work out, but we do want you wearing one when you come in and leave the facility. We're recommending that. Um we're not gonna like highly require it as in I'm not gonna like hop on you like I do when you wear your dirty shoes. Um but we know it's the best practice to both be wearing masks and as you're walking in and out, there's not as clear path of social distancing as once you're in your square um or your clearly marked spot. So something to think about is getting or making a mask at this point. Um there's so many resources out there, so many great masks. Um so check those out. We'll be giving out resources and um some reviews on masks we like as well. So things to think about. Um additionally, cleaning wise, like I mentioned, we have the new floor scrubber coming this week. Um we'll be using that to clean down the floors. We are gonna use um the bleach dilute to do spray bottles at every single station. We'll have its own spray bottle. Um every single station will have its own little mini hand sanitizer that stays in the station so that people can use um their spray bottle wiped on their equipment before or after use. The coaches are gonna be getting equipment set up for you guys um the best we can. Some equipment's obviously gonna still have to be picked out by our members. Um the rig is plenty distance, especially like doing squats or anything like that. We are at six feet from each other anyway. Um same with pull ups. We'll just make sure nobody's like sharing a bar. Um boys, sorry, you can't use the same barbell or same uh rig spot and fight over it anymore. You gotta socially distance from it. So some things to think about um will be stations, cleaning wise, what we're doing for you guys is giving you the supplies and then we're setting it up before and after. We're putting it away because we wanna make sure we can clean it properly before it's um back in, you know, like the rig stand or the bar stand or anything like that. Uh Posh can't wait to Scott again. Same. Ready to get back to it. As I look over at the rig spot, I just imagine all of you guys over there. I won't be able to walk through probably as much. I'll have to like walk on, ah, wear my mask. I'll walk through. We'll figure that out when the time comes. Um so yeah, with this, when we're saying that classes are gonna be at key times, those additional class times are gonna be legged by 15 minutes. So we're not gonna have any back to back classes offered. Um we need time to get people out and get equipment cleaned and make sure everything's ready for the next class. So something to expect there is that we'll have some like 15 or 35 minute like weirder times that are normal. Um and we'll get all that information to you guys. Programming, the question of that one. First off, for safety, we know you guys haven't been squatting heavy weights, right? So we're not gonna program 90% back squats or something crazy like that. We'll likely be using some RPE or rate of perceived exertion training as we get back into barbells. Same with the rig. Once we're getting back on that rig, we're gonna do that in a reasonable way. More so in pre-wads than in a metcon or um a high intensity situation. So getting our bodies ready again for some of those movements we've probably been missing out on. Um additionally, some things to think about with programming will be to keep you guys from using too much equipment at one time or touching a ton of things at one time. We'll try to keep it a reasonable um number of pieces of equipment that you're using. Um and then we're gonna program in a way that allows for you guys to think about um if you're concerned at all. I was talking with a member, just like even burpees. If you're not comfortable laying on the ground, we will be cleaning the ground multiple times. We now have that awesome floor scrubber. Um but if you're not comfortable with it, we're not gonna require it. We'll have a different option for those things, like maybe just um jumping to a plank position and back up. Your hands are gonna be the same hands, right? You can wash them after you touch your barbell, the ground and all of that. Um so things we're thinking about, not sharing equipment. Um a little bit different if you're like Dylan and Lizzie or Kevin Elise and you wanna share kettlebell or something like that. Or we're not gonna shun you for it, um but we're gonna allow the workouts to be programmed in a way that don't require you to share any equipment with anyone. Um and all those fun things. So we went through state of reopening. We've got those key things like limiting class sizes. What we're gonna be doing from a cleaning standpoint, some changes in programming. Oh, Posh, I love you so much. Yes, Posh says she um now has an excuse to not do burpees. It's true, but she also will wear her burpee shirt and she'll still do burpees. I know it. You guys can wash your clothes. I don't know if you know that, but they're washable. Um some things to think about, how are like if you're questioning at all, oh, sorry, one thing with um all of this going on. In the month of June, for sure, you will still get a daily email with all of the things you've been getting now. So a warm up, a pre-wad, a wad. And you'll be getting um that workout video for you from YouTube. So the month of June, you'll still get that even if you're coming back into the physical location. Every single person will still get access to a home option in case there's any concern of them coming in here. We will be giving out guidelines on things to be monitoring for yourself. Staff will be monitoring certain things. Um and we will not be allowing people to come in that have a very clear apparent cough, sneeze, whatever's going on. Um so please be self-monitoring um during that time and we will be as well as coaches. Um so we will have access to home programming if you're not comfortable in the month of June coming in here. And then the potential that that will happen in July, but in July, we're also going to be opening an online only coaching option for people that really don't think they're ever gonna choose to return to a physical space. I know most of our members, that's not the case. We're um in a place that we're comfortable being back here. But some people may have learned that they really enjoy home workouts more or that they want that one-on-one online coaching happening. Um and so we'll open up a platform for that starting in July. Um some things to think about, but for the month of June, still getting that daily workout sent to you in an email. Um and then going into how I'm making these changes or how we're making these changes, what guidelines we're using. Like I mentioned, listening to those daily announcements or weekly announcements by Tony Evers, we're definitely following the governor and what the government's recommending at this time. Um using resources like um Wisconsin. Uh I can't think of the whole acronym, but it's WEDEC, W-E-D-C. Um they have guidelines for opening gyms, so we're working on looking through those and kind of using their tools and guidelines as well. Um following other gyms, I'm actually part of a Facebook group that is gyms from all over the world. It's super cool. Um they have people in the UK, New Zealand, China, uh literally anywhere, Canada, the US, so places like Georgia that are opening, places like um Tulsa. One of my friends is in Tulsa. There are people everywhere experiencing this at different rates and so I get to see what other gyms are doing and how they're making this as safe as possible for their members and still enjoyable. Um so working through being part of that group, that's incredibly helpful for me on what I think is beneficial for us and what I don't really think is necessary and finding that balance to uh support you guys best. One big thing is that I do have a mentor and that's really helpful for how to open in a way that um goes with our values. So we're making sure that our values are key during this time, which is that coaching that we offer. So we wanna make sure that we're still able to offer a great coaching service, whether it is that you're doing these workouts at home or you're doing them here. So our focus is gonna be group classes 100%. What that means is that the month of June will have no open gym and it will not have OLE for the time being. One thing being that we don't need Olympic lifting in a special class time right now. Um we will be working on it in our pre-wads for sure. But we don't need like a barbell only one hour because none of our bodies are ready for that anyway. So for the month of June, those are some things to expect. We will be taking it one month at a time, continuing to give you guys more information as we go. What now? For you guys at this time, I will be sending out a survey with this video um at the end of today. That survey is gonna be really, really helpful for us in figuring out what class times are most important for people and what will get most of us in the doors that want to be here. Additionally, it's gonna ask questions about your comfort level um with being in a physical location. We have zero judgment towards what you feel um about this. We just wanna know, are you comfortable coming back in? Do you trust that we are doing the things that make you comfortable to come in? What would it take? What do you wanna see at home um if you're not coming back in? Um one other thing to think about is getting your equipment back that you borrowed. So not right now, we're not rushing it in. Um we still have plenty of this month left. But by June 3rd, we need all the equipment back in. Um in the waiver we signed when you guys took out equipment, it was a two-day leg after the reopening of the physical location. Um so that'd be by June 3rd. You're welcome to bring it in advance. If you wanna bring it before then, you can let us know. Um but we'll have some times that you can drop off before June 1st and up to June 3rd. So something to think about there. Couple other things I wanna mention. One, make sure you're checking your emails. Um we try to give as much information there as we can. So continue to follow in those emails, even if they're just the um little updates or they're your topic Tuesday, whatever the case. We're trying to educate you guys at this time. Um it's really important that you guys know what's going on with here, but also for your overall health. So make sure you're following your email updates. If you do not get those emails, send me an email so that I can get you on our list. Um continue watching these updates. I'm gonna be doing Tuesdays, um some town hall Tuesdays for you guys up until that day and probably um through June as well. It's just easier to get that information out. And then download Zen Planner. If you have not downloaded Zen Planner yet on your phone or something like that, download it. We want you to be looking at that. Um what we will do is get you those guidelines. So getting together all that information that I shared in a very clear concise place, that will not be in a rush. Like I don't need to get it to you guys right away. Like I mentioned, I'm trying to really follow what's being expected. And so it's not really important to me to rush it out to you guys and then have to change it. So I'm just trying to get you the best information I have right now and then tweak it into a actual readable, digestible format when um we have more information. Um additionally, we're gonna continue to provide you guys education and resources. So some things we're doing, um we have a couple med students that go here and they're gonna work on getting some information out to you guys about just in general, the way that you can improve your immune system and stay healthy regardless of what's going on in the world. Um we're gonna start with that. We're gonna give you guys some information on, you know, the importance of hand washing and not just like the generic stuff. We're gonna give you some good information on the importance. You know, what does the mask do? Where's the benefit? What are the downsides of it? Some things like that. Um and then if there are any other questions that you guys tend to have, like, you know, can I eat food that somebody else made for me? Those questions, I might not have the answers for, but I am part of Mariter Hospital and they give out these resources on a great webpage for us. So I can give you guys a lot of resources if you have questions. Um additionally, we have, I just saw Mark jump in here. We have people like Bill that are working in um some of the, are working on some of these questions for their staff and for other people in the community. So I have plenty of resources for us, not only from the hospital, from my gym mentors, but also from other people within the gym um that are able to help us with opening in the safest and most fun way. Um we will also be providing reasonable supplies. So what that means by reasonable supplies is we will be providing cleaning supplies, um hand sanitizing wipes and hand sanitizers. But Libby knows Bill. Love it. Um we will be providing the best cleaning resources we can, but reasonably, right? We are still a small gym and we don't have a disposable income that we can just like throw into all these things. You guys are here for one hour of your day, so make sure that your one hour of your day, you're considering the things you need during it. If you need, which I recommended, you know, bringing a mask in and out, please bring your mask for that one hour of your day. Um we're not gonna try to supply beyond what's necessary for one hour. So questions from you guys, if you have any instantly, I'll kinda hang out here for a minute, let you guys pop some questions. Uh I agree with Mark. Bill is a pretty big deal. He was great. I mentioned it this morning that I had a question for him. Um two things that might be questions coming up. Bathrooms, yes, they will be open and operated. I think bathrooms, you should always wash your hands after. There will be a sign reminding you to wash your hands before you leave. We have the garbage is right by the door knob, so you can, you know, for the ladies, you can use your towel and then dump it in the garbage when you walk out. For the men, you guys don't even have to use your hands to open the door. You can kick it open. You can knock it open with your shoulder, um things like that. Shower rooms, because they are partitioned, um we can have you guys in the shower rooms um limited to a couple people at a time so that you can still socially distance while you get ready in the shower rooms. And then that's where I was talking with Sharice and her recommendation about Bill would be giving a cleaning supply for you guys to, uh great question, Brittany. Um so Brittany's asking, where can we leave our stuff during class? We're gonna be asking that you guys keep it in the car. If you have like a pair of shoes or something that you need to bring in, you can bring them in and they can fit in your square with you. Um like, you know, your shoes and your water bottle can fit in your square, but we're not gonna have a bunch of extra space. So if you have to run out to your car to put something away. I haven't quite designed what it looks like coming in. You'll probably be still using the front door, have some hand sanitizer. There will be no self-check-ins. Um you guys will just come right into class. And then as soon as we can, actually I have the garage door open today. Um so the garage door will be likely the main thing. If it's open, the front door will be locked and we'll just be having you guys come through the front door so you can put your stuff right at your spot. But great question, Brittany. I like to try to think about it, guys. This is one thing that I've been thinking about. Um and maybe Libby would be the only one that could maybe attest to it. Way back, uh CrossFit Gyms didn't even have a bathroom or a shower room. They were literally a square. They were a box. Um so we're gonna be kind of going a little bit back to that, but we are gonna allow you guys to have the bathrooms in the shower rooms. But where you keep your stuff and stuff like that will be um ideally outside of the gym space. Other questions? Anyone? I have to say for me, this was way more helpful to get you guys the information in this way because I would be emailing a million things and you guys would be like, I'm done reading. So the good old days. No fun or smiles either. Very true. Holding in the middle or the bottom of a squat for three minutes with the barbell overhead. I think that's what implements again when you guys get back here. Although after yesterday's workout, I feel a little bit like um the original programming where you're really sore. So I'm just reading Jenna's question. Um so I did mention about masks and you can watch at the beginning. All I said is that we're gonna ask that you guys wear them as you come in and leave. Um I'm not gonna be like hounding you down to do it, but it is very respectful of other people. I think a lot of times with the masks, what we think of, and I I catch myself doing this, is, oh, I'm not concerned about this. So I don't need to wear one. And whereas that might be true for myself, as I am not as concerned about getting um COVID as maybe other people are. And that's just a personal view of it. It's um still important that I wear one when I'm in contact with people. So wearing one when you come in and go out, um that would be ideal just for the safety of others and a little bit yourself. The choice to wear one while you work out is going to be more related to your personal um belief. So if your, I shouldn't say belief, your personal uh comfort. So if you feel that wearing a mask during your workout is necessary for you to feel comfortable working out here, 100% fine. Um but we're not gonna require it because we do have those socially distanced spaces that we'll be setting up. Um and then Posh was asking, when do you want us to finish the survey by? Um I'm gonna get it out today, which is Tuesday. Ideally by Sunday, um we'll have those surveys done so that I can start planning next week uh what class times look like. I'm getting in contact with each of the coaches, so it's, it's so hard to, you know, work all these things at the same time. Um but I wanna get some of your guys' feedback. 5:00 AM and noon and 4:30 are almost the guaranteed. The 5:00 AM and noon are guaranteed class times. 4:30 is the one that might be like a few minutes on or off. And yeah, when it comes to those masks, it's really um, it's really gonna be comfort level for people. So uh wearing one of those masks will depend on how you feel.
You doing like a webcast or something?
Yeah.
Just gotta get a picture of your trench.
Yeah, no problem. The landlord is here, guys.
I'm shy. Don't put me on camera.
So Posh is like, Posh will make you wear it while you do burpees only, if that helps. Anyone else? Questions? As I mentioned, I will start to, Brittany says hello. I will start to um do these more often on Tuesdays for you guys, just to check in, give you any updates that I have. They may be a good amount of repetition, just going through because I really want to drill in what we're doing to help you guys and what you guys um, you know, answer any questions you guys may still have. I do want to ask that you hold off on having too many questions until we send out those guidelines. If there's something that's really like concerning or bothering you and I haven't addressed it yet, sending the question and then being okay with my answer being that information will come. Um, because I want to make sure that I'm not just responding one-on-one to people. As I do the coffee with coach calls or even just like talk with coaches, um, a lot of people have questions and they're often the same question. So I just want to get them in uh one format to answer everyone in one space. So that's what these calls are going to be for, getting out some emails to you guys is going to help with that as well. Um, but if you do have a question, I want you to ask it and then I'll just likely respond with, you know, what um, with something generic like that will be answered. Um, yeah. Any initial thoughts, any concerns, questions? Jan's waving maybe, or maybe I waved at Jan. I don't know. All right. Well, I want to thank you guys so much for taking the time to jump in and listen. We're very, very, very hopeful and excited for June 1st. I'm almost getting too excited, I think, sometimes. Um, but if things keep going on the up and up as they have been, um, we should be good. One thing I want to mention to you guys is if you haven't been paying attention to the Badger Plan or to the um, just even the overall like Wisconsin or the overall government plan, the federal plan, there are phases that um are in place that are helping us get closer to opening. And with those, the three big things have been met. So we've seen a reduction in cases, which is huge, a reduction in positive um testing. We've seen the capacity of hospitals to be at the level that's necessary um per the government's recommendation. I shouldn't even say the government, per the health uh department's recommendation. And then we now have um the Align Energy Center as a easy community access testing center. Um, so those big things are happening that are getting us closer. So I appreciate all the patience that's come from everyone during this time, including myself. I mean, right, we're all being patient. I think we're all ready for this to be done, but we've been really helpful in flattening the curve and giving time for us to see those things that we need to be seeing in order to get us open. So as always, we operate as a community beyond our small gym. Um, and so I'm thankful for you guys for doing your part to help us out. Thank you all and goodbye.